We've got six thirty-one. Um, calling the meeting to order. Can I get approval of the agenda that may be amended? And do you have anything, Tom, or we're just following this straight through?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So we got approval of minutes.
And what's over?
I've got all three of us, December twenty-third. It was a regular meeting. Um, and I didn't see anything. This was the partial budget review with the police department, finance department, and others. So can I get a motion to approve if you're good with it? What was that?
I'm just digging.
Oh, okay.
The very first one here, right?
There you go.
No, I have that. I'm trying to find the minutes.
That is the minutes.
Oh, that is? Oh.
Yeah.
Do you not have minutes?
In your packet? I don't know.
He might have missed them. Yeah. So I didn't see anything there.
Yeah, I mean, it looks good.
I got it.
All in favor of approving the minutes of December twenty-third?
Aye.
Say aye. I've got select board meeting minutes, January sixth.
Chris.
Rob, that was just you and I?
Yep.
And that was the fire department at five-thirty and the library at six-thirty?
Yep.
Once again, I don't see anything in here. It was just the budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve.
All in favor, Rob and I?
Aye.
Um, special select board meeting minutes of January eighth, all three of us. And this was town manager interview candidate. Motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, January tenth at four P.M., all three of us, once again, it was with the candidate. Motion to approve.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I have January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, all three of us. This is a regular select board minutes. I didn't see anything in this one. I'll read it this weekend. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we've got January fifteenth, the special select board meeting, and it was town managers, um, interviews again. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we move through those. Next I got up is Board of Liquor Control.
Okay, first I wanted to start off with, I have three special events permits. The first one is February second, split stills, um, at Dark Side. The second one is March seventh and eighth. On the seventh, it's Saint Johnsberry Distillery, on the seventh and eighth. On the seventh, it's got to do with the ski Vermont specialty food and beverage day, and that one's gonna be outside the main lodge. And the next day, on the eighth, it's outside the Waffle Cabin at Pico. And those two are for the Vermont specialty food and beverage day.
Okay. You're just letting us know.
I'm just letting you know. Okay. Okay, and then I believe you have the list in front of you. I wanted to start with the two renewals. The first one is Cedar Tree Hospitality, doing business as Snowd Inn. They're renewing their first-class hotel license. The second one is Free Hub LLC, Base Camp Bike and Ski. They are up for renewal for their second-class license. So those two are renewals.
I don't have that.
Do you not have that?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve second class for Vermont Craft LLC?
Yep, motion.
Oh, well, Vermont Craft is a new one.
Oh, the Free Hub?
And, yeah, they have a first class and they are applying for a second class, Vermont Craft, at the Mountain Green Resort. And I believe that's Dave Lemieux up on the screen right now.
I could've sworn that...
We currently have a first and a third class.
First and third, okay.
We've seen some demand and requests from the residents in the Mountain Green to be able to provide to-go within the building. So we're applying for a second class to try to meet those accommodations.
Okay, so can I get a motion to allow the town clerk to move forward with Vermont Craft LLC for a second class?
Yep, motion, yeah.
Um, this is just for folks in the hotel?
I mean theoretically, um, it would be open to the public, you know, because we are a public entity, but, um...
The only reason why I ask is because you're a hotel and your business for that condominium association has parking for certain, the restaurant, and now all of a sudden you're throwing a store in there. I don't know if that increases or decreases because of the new parking regulations.
Yeah, we're in the resort.
Right.
The previous hops had a to-go license as well.
Okay.
When they operated in there. It was pretty much, you know, it's pretty much just two coolers, you know, region coolers that we can sell out of, and we have a dedicated register. When I talked with Martin Prevost from the DLC, he and I talked through the logistics behind it as far as, you know, as far as how to properly handle, you know, in-person sales in the building. I don't think it's going to create additional parking strain upon the parking spaces that are out front. I would suspect that ninety-some, probably ninety-plus percent of the sales would happen from folks that are coming in on a Friday night and looking to go to their condo and have a glass of wine before they go to bed.
Jay's in the waiting room. Okay. I mean, there's a motion on the floor to move forward. It's just a concern that when people come in and it's adding businesses, you said hops already had one. So can I get, um, all in favor? I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna take a look at it as zoning administrator, just to make sure, because we did change the parking or whatever, and I don't think it's a problem, but it's just something that we have to take a look at. And I think we looked at it for the same for one other place a while ago. It didn't interfere, okay? Dave?
Okay.
So the next one up is Cedar Tree Hospitality, first class. And that is, where is Cedar Tree?
Snowd Inn.
Snowd Inn?
Yeah, and it's a renewal.
Can I get a motion to allow the town clerk to move forward with Cedar Tree Hospitality, always known as Snowd Inn, for first class?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
And then we have Free Hub LLC for second class. And Free Hub is?
Base Camp Bike and Ski Shop.
And that's been for like six years now, so it's just a renewal. And a motion for the town clerk to move forward with Free Hub LLC?
Yeah, motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Select board member feedback and concerns. I'm gonna save mine for the end if there is anything. At this time, there isn't really anything.
No.
You're about to save it for the end?
Yep.
Okay. Planning commission member appointment. So I think Lisa is on, and you can fill us in on who is leaving, even though we have the paperwork in front of us. And you're muted, Lisa. Through everyone, we can barely hear you, she's saying. Can you hear us, Lisa? Better? We can't hear you because you're muted.
I can barely hear you. All of a sudden, your voice dropped way down to...
That's a good thing.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear you. You can't hear us.
Usually you talk loudly, but all of a sudden, like, your voice went way down and I could barely hear, and my volume's all the way up.
So what I just said is that we're on number six. Planning commission member appointment. There's one person stepping down.
I'm really struggling to hear you.
Okay, so Kurt Peterson, can you hear me? Can you hear me loud and clear?
Yes, sir.
Polly, can you hear me? Polly says hi. She says it's good. So, okay. Can you understand that I'm saying we're on number six?
Okay.
And if you can just give who is stepping down?
Yeah. So the planning commission is, you know, we're supposed to have five members and one alternate member. Right now, we have four members and one alternate, so we're down one permanent member. Two of our members, Guy Keith and Dave McComb, and Dave is actually an alternate member, their terms expire this year, and they have both indicated that they would like to get reappointed. Ricky Bowers' term expires actually in twenty-twenty-seven, but he has moved out of town, so he has resigned. So that means right now we have two open positions. Don Gon, who I believe is online, has expressed interest in being appointed, a full-time member who's a planning commission. He, um, I reviewed his resume, and I don't know if Linda shared it with you guys, but Don could certainly talk about himself. He works for Casella Construction, and I think he would be a real asset to the planning commission. So I'm hoping that the select board would see fit to appoint Mr. Bonn and then request that we advertise for a fifth member.
Okay. So what happens with this board is that we should, just like for you, put it out that on the website that we're looking for two spots.
Two people, right.
And then Don, we usually go with, you know, the planning commission's recommendation, but in this case, we're also looking for a second slot, too. So if we can get that put on the website, Tom?
Okay.
You know, and then in the blast?
Next meeting.
And then we can just post it at the three different places. We don't have to put it in the newspaper, okay? And that way, we get that. And then the next meeting we have in two weeks, because it has to be posted for ten days, then we can take it up from there. But Don, since you're here, I met you once when you, a couple months ago, you just had built a new house up on, forget the road.
Off Roundabout.
Off, yeah, up around about, or Down Graff, whatever, over that area. So do you want to just give the other two a little update on you?
Sure. Recently moved to Callington. Had been a second homeowner here for seven or eight years. Built the house and transitioned. My wife and I had moved up here full-time last November. I'm an executive at Casella Construction. Have worked in the construction industry for eleven years. Prior to Casella, I was a CFO of a construction company in Rhode Island, primarily in the natural gas pipeline industry. And luckily, transitioned and fell into a nice position with Casella Construction. Have been there for about a year and a half at this point, just a little bit under. Lot of experience in operations as well as finance. And, you know, just very interested in the town, happy to be here and willing to participate and help any way I can.
Welcome to the town.
Hey, great.
Welcome. And we will be putting in what we have to do, follow the rules. But in the past, when the planning commission goes out and, you know, they're the ones that are talking to people, and they kind of give us a little update. So I think we can just do that, Tom, and we get that done. And then we meet again, I think, in two weeks?
Right.
In two weeks, and then we'll be making, we put it out tomorrow, then we should be making the appointments in two weeks.
Good.
The next meeting.
Makes sense.
Okay? Thank you for showing.
Nice to meet you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Same here.
Next up is emergency department reports. Fire department first on this time, this list, instead of, we mixed it up. Last time was police.
November, we had four hundred and twenty-two calls. Not once in was assisting Plymouth Fire, had a structural fire with an engine and tanker. Multiple car crashes due to weather. And other than that, I mean, that was late. And then for December, end of the year, was four hundred and sixty-seven calls. That's fifty-nine above last year's numbers.
So when you say November, four hundred and twenty-two, that's year-to-date?
Yes.
Just not November?
Right. That, yeah.
Okay.
So again, we had a run of mutual aid calls assisting Plymouth again with another structured fire. Then we had two structural fires that were contained, a room of origin, which we found that small heaters underneath the bathroom sinks and the kitchen were catching fire. Talked with Josh about that, and that's been an ongoing issue lately. Other than that, one EMT, one member in EMT class, and still had five members on the Fire One and Two program in Woodstock, and five in the hybrid class. And that's about it, so.
So these reports are identical.
Same report.
See, I mean, which, that's what it was. I mean, we, November, we assisted at a structured fire in Plymouth over by...
Yeah, but how do you have total incidents in November of year-to-date of four twenty-two, and then you go another month later, total incidents year-to-date, four twenty-two?
And the calls to date at this time on the November is three forty-nine, not four twenty-two. And the calls to date at this time on the December is four oh-eight, not four twenty-two. So is it the three forty-nine was the right number in November for year-to-date?
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
From twenty-three, yeah. From twenty-three. Calls are dated this time from twenty-three.
Calls are dated at this time, yeah. You wanted what we were doing last year, or the year before, at the same time?
Okay, calls are dated this time from twenty-twenty-three. Okay. So that was for the twenty-twenty-three.
But total incidents year-to-date in November twenty-four was four twenty-two. Total incidents year-to-date in December twenty-four is four twenty-two.
They're in the easy month.
We had no change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had no incidents?
That's what it's saying.
No, I mean, this is the...
No, but if you read the report...
You read your report.
November twenty-twenty-four says total incidents YTD year-to-date, four twenty-two. So I accept November twenty-twenty-four, and then it says December of twenty-twenty-four, total incidents to date, four hundred and twenty-two.
That's not, I got four sixty-seven.
We have...
So you might, I don't know how that one...
Here, you can take a look at this, and maybe we want to take a look at that.
Because this is the one, this is the one I just pulled off my computer.
Yeah, but this was given...
This is what?
Yeah.
I said four twenty-two.
Okay, all right, I will get an updated one for you.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, the end of year date was four sixty-seven.
Okay. So you had about fifty calls in December?
Yeah.
Of the fire calls we had, assuming that the numbers are exactly the same, ten-ten, fifteen-fifteen, nine-nine?
No, total for, that was twenty-six call, twenty-six player, fourteen EMS, and five both.
Yeah, so we got a report here for November and December that says?
Same thing.
Ten, fifteen, nine.
So December's not really a good report.
No.
Okay.
I will give you an updated one.
So I guess, I like to go back. How many of these were false alarms? Of the fire calls that we received?
A majority of them are false alarms.
Okay. And in that, are they multiple false alarms?
Same location.
Same location.
Yeah, I've got to look back. Some are, I know one on Spring Hill Road is a...
Three oh-five?
Yeah. I wasn't gonna, yes, that's one of the ones that's recurring.
So three oh-five, two or three years ago, we ended up having to find them, because we do have, if you guys keep on going there, there is an ordinance in place that we find them, and it's a certain dollar amount per over. I just remember three oh-five because Paul, the previous chief, had said there was some capacitor or something wrong in the box, and they had switched it out.
It went to a heat. So what they did is they went from a heat, or from a photo to a heat.
Right.
Well, now we're running into the same problem again, in a, with a different head. So I'm working, I'm working with the owner to try to fix that.
But we're sending our guys out.
Yeah, I'm sending the duty, I'm just sending the duty crew.
We need to be keeping a track, so, and this is before you, and it was before Paul, and it was before Chris. But we used to get a report, and it used to be like monthly, and it would show the calls and where they went to, and it would say "false alarm." And we could look, and we could see?
I will.
One, two, three, Smith Road. And then later on, one, two, three, Smith Road. And I could go through it and then say, hey, you had six calls here this month. You know, two o'clock in the mornings, and it doesn't, you don't want them going, because one of the things, too, if they don't fix their alarm, then people just go, it's just that place again, and they slow down because it's just a false alarm. And that's the one time that it's not a false alarm.
So the Excel program that I've got set up now, I will have that for you for the next meeting.
But then we need to start, let's pull the ordinance for the false alarm, and then just start finding, but...
Tom and I, we...
There were like sixty false alarms over a year and a half period at that one location two or three years ago. Okay?
So...
And we're like, every night, right? When the property, the transfer ownership, they had to write a check for a large sum of money to the town?
Yeah.
For reimbursement.
So on that note, I've been checking with the other ordinances and places. Ours is kind of on the low side. I mean, is there, if I bring something to you guys, saying if we can...
We're the board that approves it.
I mean...
But right now, what we're looking at is, is that we've gone through the budget, and there was really no line, there was a line item, but there was nothing in there for fees for reimbursement. We jumped it up, but if you have, this is what other towns charge, you know, we're interested in seeing it, but we thought we did a pretty good job of putting something in there for you to...
I have the same concerns as it follows with sending our assets out to these accidents over the past, like I see you guys tied up over there. And that's, you know, the town's equipment, the town's time, and we're paying everyone to be out there. Okay? And to me, these truckers that decided to go over the past and do that, you know, they need to pay the freight. And so I think that those things are billable situations to them, as it is. And so, you know, when we're in a tight budget, you know, situation as we are, and trying to find every dollar, this would surely help the town get over that hurdle that we are doing the ordinance as it is and follow it.
And it doesn't really matter what budget? We put ordinances in place. We were asked by the fire department many years ago to put them in place. And I've kind of like, if you're not going to follow the ordinance, then why did you get us to approve it?
Yeah.
So let's start getting that. So if there's a car accident with, and you go to it, and the fire trucks have to come or whatever? You get the insurance?
Yep, we can provide that to the fire department.
And we take the information, too, so, I mean, I've been, I've been getting the
information.
Okay. And then if there's a truck that...
Yep.
Jackknife's going up or whatever, or gets stuck up there, and the trucks have to go up there, does anyone get the insurance for that, for a car, for a jackknife truck?
Yeah, if there's a crash involved.
If there's no crash involved?
Not normally. We, please don't.
Okay.
But if it's something the town wants to invoice for time with, if a fire truck is there?
I just know some people that get, I had a brother-in-law that lived, like, has a house over in Weathersfield, and he was coming down his own driveway in an ice storm, and lost control of his car, and he went across the road, and they wrote him up for a ticket of not properly handling your car. Okay?
That's tough.
No, 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 no. But what I'm getting at is, but Chris, if the truck is not in an accident, and you're saying we need to, because our trucks are going there...
Is it reasonable enough to ask for insurance card?
Is it reasonable not to ask the car, but not also give them a ticket?
I'm not looking to find the driver, but to me, the reality is, is that when we have to put our assets out there and tie them up at this period of time, we're directing traffic and everything else, our protection elsewhere in town is diminished, okay? As well as we're paying the labor for everyone to be there. So to me, you know, sorry, you chose to do this, but you gotta pay the freight. I mean, our old truck repair shows up, and they're gonna get paid, okay? They're not doing it out of the kindness of their heart. So I think that we need to act the same way.
I know when I worked in, worked for another fire department, we checked for crashes and anything up on the interstate or anywhere, we charged. So, I mean, I'm more, more than willing, so yes, I will start that.
So, my last question is, is like, when you have fire, let's say for November ten?
Yes.
Are they all fires in the town, or is that the mutual aid going to, like, Ludlow and whatever else?
That is also mutual aid. That's all come up. I can, that'll be broken down next month.
Yeah. So if you can give us what was in town?
Yep.
So let's table the December report since it's not accurate.
Okay. So, all right. Thanks a lot. Police Chief Montgomery?
Sure. I'll start in November of this year, or, geez, last year, November twenty-four. Total number of instances was two hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty-five cases with ninety phone calls to the, to our office. November twenty-three, last year, total number of instances was a hundred and eighty, with forty-four cases, and calls of service of a hundred and thirty-seven. There's a lot of phone calls that month, last November. A twenty-five percent increase from November to November, twenty-three to twenty-four. December twenty-four, total number of instances was two hundred and ninety-three, hundred and sixty-two cases with a hundred and thirty-one calls to the office. Twenty-three in December was three hundred and twenty-eight total, a hundred and eighty-two total cases with a hundred and forty-six calls to the office. The year in review, so twenty-four from January first, twenty-four to December thirty-first, total was two thousand four hundred and sixty-two with a thousand three twelve cases and one thousand five hundred and sixteen calls into the, into the office. Total for twenty-three, again, the total year was two thousand four hundred and sixteen cases with one thousand forty-four cases and calls into the offices, a thousand seven hundred and one. So about a twenty-five point six percent increase from twenty-three to twenty-four. Officer Delorenzo's been going through the EMT class. She's gonna be finishing that up in February. I cited Sergeant Hoffman. He had an opportunity to recertify as a paramedic. I thought that was a good opportunity. It was small money, so he's recertifying as a paramedic. I completed a FBI ALIDA Ethics Class through the FBI. It was pretty extensive. It was about a three-week class. Annual training we do every year, use of force, TASER, firearms, domestic violence, first aid, CPR, those are required ones. We go above and beyond that for our annual required training. Twenty-four active K-SAR members. We have active trainings and meetings, and we had a really good call-out a couple weeks ago of a lost hiker. Came in from North Clarendon. Ended up off trail, was up to his chest in the snow. He couldn't move, pulled out his cell phone, he ended up dropping a cell phone in the snow. He couldn't locate that. Lucky for him, he had a Garmin GPS watch on. He activated that for SOS, and K-SAR was activated, and we had a lot of great help from Killington Resort. Their grooming fleet actually transported K-SAR members up to the peak. Hiked in about a mile and a half and, you know, located the subject, who said he would probably be, not have made it through the night, he'd been deceased. He had significant hypothermia setting in. So that was a really good, really good call-out and result from the K-SAR guys and girls. Continuing direct patrols to assist with speed enforcement, and a lot of things we're getting this year, it's new, kind of people and businesses have found out we do civil fingerprints, businesses, daycare, schools, teachers, we acquire that, so we charge twenty-five dollars for those, and we're getting a lot, a lot of calls for those over the past couple of months. And the next couple pages, it's kind of the top ten calls for the month of November and December, and I did a few different dates on that, including the total number of cases for the twenty-three and twenty-four. Again, it's a top ten, doesn't show all the cases, obviously, but it's kind of the top ten.
Any questions, Rob?
I don't have any questions.
Chris?
No.
No, it looks good.
Department reports. We have the treasurer's report.
Yes, we do.
I have November thirtieth in front of me, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Monica, do you want to present this? We already talked about that. So I don't want to put you on the spot. I'd be happy to.
Do you guys have a copy of December?
We do not. We only have November.
I have December.
Oh.
I have December's report. I have the treasurer's report of November thirtieth and the restricted funds. And then after the restricted, keep going. Then after restricted is another. So after that, do you have?
Oh, after restricted, yes, yes.
Okay? Okay? So why don't we just go to the December?
Yeah, I think that's more accurate. I think. You can see here you have five point six million right now in the checking account. We're getting close to restricted fund already amount too. So, but then in February fifteen is the tax collection. So we're gonna have some.
So this is back to like we were, when we were into November going into. So there's five point six one five in the, in the bank as of December thirty-first. There's been money coming in in January, still, little, little bit.
Yeah, little bit, not so much, yeah.
You know, there's four point two million in restricted funds of that. So we have about one point four if we look at that at December thirty-first. There is a payment that's due June first, eight point three million dollars. Okay? And I believe there's a bunch of money that's, it's, once again, it's going to be the same thing, that there's money that's come in that we're using the general fund until we get the money from us, from Community Bank. So there may be a million or two that's sitting out from there.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna have a better picture in the end of February when you have all the tax money in.
So I mean, I think if we, if we say that we're putting out, like, I think our total taxes is like twenty-two or twenty-four million throughout the year, Tom? So we split up in thirds. It's about eight, seven to eight million dollars, which will cover that payment plus. So we look like we're in a lot better shape than we were going into.
Is there any way that we could get an indication of how much is being, is being hung up at a certain time period with, in terms of waiting for SRF refunding or whatever, what the lag is on our bill out?
They're very fast.
It's pretty quick. The thing is, now that we have that loan with Community for the SR, for one through three A.
Yep.
The minute we get the bill from, like, there's a check only out to Casella tomorrow when we sign the warrants or whatever. Okay, they'll put that in somewhere they have, they can only do it once a month, I believe. And so the end of this month, they'll put it in and then we get it back a couple of weeks.
Okay, good. All right, that's good. Last time we just had like, we had a lot.
We, we put it out, we put it out and then we're supposed to put it over to Community Bank. And Community Bank gives us the check like within, or deposits us the money within a week. And then we wait for SRF to pay off Community. So, but.
So we're using the short gap.
Yeah, so I believe what Monica is saying is correct. We're gonna have a better idea.
I would agree.
Come the middle of February.
That's right.
When the payments are, are due.
The, the only one thing I want to mention in the golf account. I moved a few weeks ago seventy thousand from the pro shop, from the restaurant to the pro shop since, because the restaurant don't have the interest accumulating in the account. So I thought it will be a good idea to move that money. So, but you're gonna see this in the next.
Yeah. And, and, and the previous treasurer used to do that because the pro shop only, not the pro shop, the restaurant only needs like twenty, twenty-five grand to open.
Open up, yeah.
So they would move it over to there to get them open and then they can go back and forth from that.
That's right.
So you're doing what was done in the past and is the right thing to do. It's getting interest on the other account.
A little bit.
Every little bit counts, right?
That's right.
So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. A motion to approve the December thirty-first treasurer's report.
Got motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
The restricted funds account, we might as well just jump to the, this, I think that, yeah, December thirty-first.
Yeah, this one here.
Yeah, and it matches exactly to the treasurer's report that we just approved. And restricted funds, four point two one eight, one three seven. And when you look at the total receipts and disbursements.
Yep.
It shows at the bottom, the total balance is four, two, one, eight, one, three, seven, seven, six. So everything is positive in this report here. So can I get a motion to accept the restricted funds as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Got motion, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we got the comparative report, Tom, for December twenty twenty-four of the general fund.
Right.
Anything that sticks out with you?
Um, there's a lot. There's a few that are overspent compared to the budget. I'm looking at dues under managing municipalities. And actually, we talked about this during the budget process. The two items that are in that ten thousand dollars expenditure is, are dues to VLCT and to Cedar. And we should probably specify that a little more in the explanation. And certainly for twenty-five was under budgeted. And I hope we increased it for twenty-six, but I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I'm gonna bring you back to like the first page where it has the revenues, just so you can follow Rob on this here. So you can see in FY twenty twenty-four, there was actual at period six, thirteen million, seven thirty-six collected. We're saying now seventeen million, seventy-one is about four million dollars more. But our property taxes did go up quite a bit this past year, so that makes up for there. So it looks like it's around, you know?
Because the combines are.
Yeah. School tax.
Combines both and then one goes out the door, right?
Broken out.
Yeah. So if we round this up to eighteen million, then, or down to sixteen million, you know, we're, we're getting somewhere around five and a half million a quarter or whatever.
Got it.
So we're good on that. And that's what I was getting at before, I think, February, just like Monica was saying. We should have the eight million dollars or whatever it is to pay the school. So can I get a motion to approve the December twenty-two, twenty twenty-four comparative report?
What's, um. Oh, nevermind, I'm seeing it now. Interest income? What's that?
Interest income is when they put some money into.
Into bonds.
Into, into like a six-month or a nine-month.
So that's what we, we did that like last year too. In the end of February, we put some money in the CD. I guess we, we, we will need to talk about it, if you want to do it. Like this year, I think that's a good idea to do it. But that's the end of February.
Right. And for how many months?
Uh, we did for three months.
Yeah.
So we can take the money out the end of May and pay the school.
Right. So when you have that dollar amount that feels safe to, just bring it to.
Last year we did three million, I believe. I, I will need to like a double check.
Okay, but bring it to Tom and then bring it to the board and then the board approves and move it forward.
Sounds good, okay.
Great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Green Mountain National Golf Course comparative report.
A lot of paperwork.
Yeah.
For December twenty-four?
Yeah, it should be once I get there. There we go. So Green Mountain National Golf Course, FY twenty-six, they're showing total pro shop revenue of nine hundred and seventeen thousand, eight fifty-two compared to the same period the year before of seven seventy-nine.
Yep.
You know, they did budget for FY twenty-four the whole year, one, one, five, one. And they have gone up to twelve oh three. So they look like they're doing well on target for the revenue on here. I mean, they just keep on mixing around on this, like the eighteen holes one year has six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then, you know, it's just, there's different numbers that are coming through here or whatever. Special green fees, you know, for twenty-four was a dash, then in period six.
We should.
Seven six. And then it goes five eighty-two. And then the green fees for the eighteen holes was six seventy-five. Now they're down to twenty-six, but overall they're at six fourteen and it's five thirty-eight. And I think that's just a matter of what key they hit.
We need to set our stuff up though, so they're pointing sale reports to it. It'd be so much easier for them in the office. So if it's eighteen holes or if it's a special or not, I mean.
Right.
Come up with the categories and get it right.
Right. So that just seems to be the one.
And I think it would show us a better trend if we're trying to analyze our business too.
Yeah, because we keep on coming and goes, what's a special green fee?
Yeah, and I know. We should probably get them to come in front of us at some point.
They should.
We haven't seen them in a while.
Yeah. So, so that's on the revenue side. On the restaurant revenue side, they're at one million eighty-seven thousand or nine, ninety-seven thousand, I think that is, for period six compared to nine thirty-one the previous year. And then we run into the golf course expenses. Maintenance is at two fifty-eight compared to two forty-six. The pro shop is at two forty-four compared to two eighteen the prior year. The restaurant is at a hundred and thirty-nine compared to a hundred and six. So.
That's a big jump.
That's a big jump. And then when you look at the restaurant revenue, one seventy-four to one compared to one forty-seven. So less than thirty thousand dollars in increase in the revenue on the restaurant. But then you're seeing an increase of thirty-three thousand, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars on the expense. So that's something that sticks out to us, Tom.
Again, I think it would.
Because the year is over, it's six. So they have thirty-three thousand more for whatever.
And then adjust pricing or their waste is high. So I think it would be worth having a conversation with them, Tom, just as it pertains to what's going on at the clubhouse.
Okay. I'm actually meeting with Justin either tomorrow or the next day. I can mention that.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, yeah, I've worked with him on a couple of topics.
You know, the employee benefits expenses count, but we knew that because the payroll was going up a little bit. They're doing more business. Capital expenses are actually down period six. Cause I, I don't know why it's, oh, the sixty-one thousand dollars for the, the golf cart leases expired this past, last year. So we don't have that sixty-one thousand dollars there. But then we gained the facilities of twenty thousand, four seventy-five. And we went up to equipment of sixteen thousand instead of eight seventy-one the prior. So, but the golf cost, the golf cart lease is done. So can I get a motion to accept the Green Mountain National Golf Course competitive report?
Yep, motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is a public works report. Patrick Cushion, you can be get in.
Okay. He's in.
He's in now. Okay. I mean, I read it. I like it. Things are moving along, it seems, in the public works department. Just talks about the flood recovery, the trainings that the, the team is, the, the department is taking. She's giving us the TIF district contract one through three A on target for completion in the fall of twenty twenty-five. Those of you in the public that don't remember, that's from the Route Four wells all the ways up to the storage tanks. Contract four is from East Mountain Road to Ravine Road. And that's anticipate awarding project by February tenth. Lacer has gone through all and we had those meetings and we had Fonzie and the other things and they're all getting moved. And I think we're a week away from getting the.
Notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed from them.
Yeah.
And then also on Thursday afternoon or early Friday, we are working and Jeremy has a list of the easements from Great Gulf and the resort for the road and water, road and water.
Oh, now they go near, yeah.
Road and water, okay? And at first look at it, it's really not much red line. It's a couple of questions that Jeremy has. So he'll, he'll be working on that by Wednesday back to us. Contracts five, six A and seven. Five is from Ravine Road to, I believe, Dean Hill Road. And then Dean Hill Road to Anthony Way is six A. Six B is already put in, that's Anthony Way to Route Four. Seven is from the other side of Route Four towards, towards Pico, towards the town, town hall. There's ninety percent plans have been received for review by the town staff. Permits and bid documents will be prepared by DeFrane's Group after town meeting, assuming the bond passes. So one of the articles on the, going up is to approve the five, six A and seven. Even though this is, once again, it's the folks that are on the water line that are responsible for it, we have to go to the full town. And majority of this money for five and six A, at least fifty percent of it, will be grants. I think it's about, how much does it stay on there? About nine million, ten million?
Well, the bonds for eleven point two.
Eleven point two.
Yep.
Half of that will be at a grant from the SRF. And the balance to the water district is a forty-year note at zero percent. So consider it five and a half million dollars spread out over forty years with no interest. Can't beat that.
Let's call it a no-brainer.
Okay. Roads phases one B, Anthony Way to Route Four. There was a change order that had been signed, adjusting the final completion date to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five because of that last line that's still over there consolidated, I believe it's consolidated or Comcast. I'm not sure which one. And they decided that they're gonna order all new copper and they did, and it should be in in any week. And then they're gonna just do copper and then just take everything down on the other side. So do a switch.
Okay.
That's something we really don't have.
We have zero control over it.
We have zero control on that. Markowski still has to then do the groundwork on that side, but until the poles are out, you can't do anything. And then with the pavers coming up that first time, we have held back, I believe, seventy-five thousand dollars of payment for it because when the spring comes, we're gonna see, and Carpenter and Constant, who's Markowski's sub, nothing to do with us, will have to come in and properly set them.
Pop in?
And, and seal them properly. I think they only put in like a quarter inch of sealant and it was supposed to be an inch, an inch and a half. So that's what's going on there. And then the other things like the, of those, what are they, the yellow things you just put by your?
Balls.
Balls. Balls have to go in to stop, because I did see a video a couple of weeks ago of somebody.
Driving off.
Driving, driving off.
Great video.
You can't blame them. If you pulled out of there, you'd swear to God it's a little road, so. So anyway, that's that, okay? You know, and then she goes on with the water system. Updates have been made to the Killington Forward webpage to include information about connecting to the Killington Water System. A frequently asked question has been updated too. Connection sheets for contract four and a map of the water system have been updated. Connection sheets for construction, for contracts five, six and seven will be uploaded as soon as they are available from the engineer. And this is where it really gets important. Anybody that's on this water line system here, this is. This is where for you to get involved before a change order saying, I would like to have the water line he, not the water line, but your
Curb stop.
Curb stop here instead of where they say, or maybe you live with where they put it to. So you really need to start working on that. There's a draft water ordinance has been developed and is currently under review with the town's attorney and with VT Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. She's saying the select board will be the next to review for potential adoption. Town staff and DeFrane's Group met with Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, A and R, to update them on the status of the water system. The next step for connecting users to the system is to provide A and R with proposal, proposed list of connections and a draft form for engineer certification of connection to the system. A and R will review both and provide comments. This step needs to be completed before the town can apply for a master permit from the state for connection of system users. So this is where, I think you did the same thing, Chris, back in the sewer, back in the day, where everybody came in underneath one town permit for connection. Any questions on that?
Very good.
All right.
Thanks for.
So sign, sign number nine, change in authorization representative forms. I believe this is all SRF.
Yeah, it is. We just discovered that, um, both Abby and Mary Ellen, um, were not on, um, as authorized representatives.
Um, yeah, and they're the ones that are asking for the money?
Yeah, and they've been, they've been processing and doing all the work.
So we got, let's say the first two pages are F three dash four five nine dash two is one, and the other one is five five four dash three, giving permission for Abby to be, um, authorized representative. Can I get a motion to allow Abby to be for these two change of authorization representatives? Okay, then we have for the same two, five five four dash three and four five nine dash two for Mary Ellen Keenan Half to be a signature on top of, um, Abby. Can I get a motion to approve? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And they just have us to sign. Okay, and then you got the, um, sign the certificate of highway mileage. And I think we just really started this, uh, last year when Abby, when Abby came on. This, go ahead.
On the bottom here?
Yeah.
Just these bottom.
Yeah, there's like six lines or whatever. Um, so this is something that all of a sudden we got last year, and this is, this actually helps us when there is a flood.
Yeah.
That we can get sometimes like up to an extra ten percent or whatever.
And it, and this is what they use to determine the state aid that we get from V Trans too.
Right, so, um,
No change from last year, but it's an annual thing that, uh,
We have a total of fifty-four point nine eight nine miles in town. Um, seven point six eight is class two, thirty-four point seven three is class three, and state highway is twelve point five seven nine for the total. Um, then below there is a class four of eight point six seven in the next column. So can I get a motion to approve?
Confirming this is true?
This is confirming the truth. We haven't grown our road, so it should be the same as last year?
Yep, okay.
All right. Motion to approve the certificate of highway mileage year ending February tenth of twenty twenty-five.
Yep, yep.
All in favor, aye. And then Tom's giving you one to sign.
Oh, okay, great.
Oops, sorry.
Got it.
All right, please. We're gonna slow down for a second, Tom. Will anybody slow down?
Sure.
Anybody in the public in the, yeah, anybody in the public in here? Does anybody in the public in person have any questions so far? You become public now.
Oh, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
On behalf of the town clerk position? Okay. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that it's time to renew your dog license. The Vermont State statute requires your dog to be licensed by April one. And just to be aware, in the twenty twenty-four session, the Vermont Legislature increased the fee to be collected for the State of Vermont Rabies Control Program. So now the fee is for a neutered spade dog is eleven dollars and fifteen dollars unneutered. And you can renew in person at the town clerk's office, or you can renew by mail. Simply mail a check, made payable to the town of Killington, and a copy of the current rabies certificate. Or you can renew by dropping it in our secure lockbox, drop box with a check and current rabies certificate. And that secure drop box is right on the outside of the town hall building, right outside the door, and that's it.
Okay, does anybody on Zoom have a question we're at so far?
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, can I just do a follow-up for the cemetery commission? Uh, touching on two weeks ago.
Let's do that underneath other business, Patrick?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, all right, so I got next up, um, sign the annual town meeting warning. So, I think you all have copies of that.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna run through it quick. I mean, Article One, to elect the following town offices. It's a moderator for one year, a select board member for a term of one year, select one member for a term of three years because, um, we had one that, um, resigned early. A town clerk for a term of one year, a town treasurer for a term of three years. The one year is because of, that only had another year on it, I think. So next year that will be three. A lister for a term of three years, a cemetery commissioner for a term of three years, and a library trustee for a term of five years. Anyone that has filled out, Peggy, I believe, as the town clerk, was at town hall today till five o'clock.
Yes.
And she can present to Tom tomorrow, so we can put it out of and get it ready for who's running in, go from there.
Okay.
Um, Article Two, shall the property taxes be paid in three installments? The first due August fifteenth, the second overdue, subject to interest after August twenty-fifth, the second due November fifteenth, and overdue, subject to interest after November twenty-fifth, and the third is due February fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, with the total tax liquid after February twenty-fifth. That's standard every single year, we just changed the, the years. Article Three, shall the voters approve?
Hang on, and the third? Oh, because this goes ahead, I guess.
Yeah, okay. Article Three is shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of seven million nine hundred and two thousand eight seventy-five, of which an estimated five million four hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars shall be raised by property taxes and two million four hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and fifty in estimated non-property tax revenue for the physical year beginning July one of twenty twenty-five. It's just getting into all the state payments, the federal payments, the clerk's office, recording, the rec and everything. Article Four, shall the bonds of the town of Killington in an amount not to exceed eleven million two hundred thousand dollars, subject to the reduction through the receipt of any other resources of funding be issued for the purpose of the planning, design, acquisition, construction, and installation and equipping of water system improvements for the town of Killington? It's just the next step of when we all voted for three to one or whatever for the Tiff District for a water line that is needed through the town of Killington. Um, Article Five, shall general obligation bonds or notes of the town of Killington in an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, subject to the reduction from available state and federal grants in aid and the application of available services to be financed for a term not to exceed fifteen years, be issued for the purpose of completing renovations of the new town hall at twenty forty-six U.S. Route Four in Killington? When we had a manager, a few managers ago, we went for one point six million. I believe we paid a million fifty for the building. And that left us, um, five hundred and fifty. And we were told as a board, Chris and I, you earn here, Rob, that that was going to be enough. And putting a vault in there, putting the treasurers in the clerk's office and the staircase to get upstairs, to be handicapped accessible, and some of the issues out in the front because of the venting and the ice dams coming out front, you know, we need to go for this four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
So we can finally get this approved in March and move forward to move over to the new town hall. Can you give us an update while we're on five of where we're at with, um, like the vault and the, and Russell Hawk and?
Yeah, um, this number of four ninety is really based upon the, um, budget number that we got from, um, Russell Construction, which was awarded the contract, I think this past summer sometime. Um, but the design wasn't complete at that point, and now the, the design is nearly complete. Um, and we also, uh, as Jim mentioned, uh, there, there'll be a vault included in that. Um, and we're gonna do a subcontracted vault. Previously it was gonna be a concrete one, but we can buy one. And, uh, actually the board approved that purchase some time ago because it was like about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and this includes, uh, still some, you know, the four ninety includes costs for, um, the, um, additional work for the architect to finish the drawings because they, they weren't done, uh, until now. Uh, and even a, a sign for out front.
So the vault was a big, the vault was huge.
Yep.
But this ended up, I think it's like a hundred and seventeen and change. Um, the cement one was gonna be putting a hole in the roof,
Yeah.
then coming through the second floor and start pouring. This other one is a prefab, it's, um, steel, two, two feet lengths they come, and they, um, weld them together, and then they put just some.
It's also a substantial savings, so.
Yeah, that was a savings on that there.
We're original.
But the staircase and then some of the work on the outside is, is gonna, and I think Mr. Finer had mentioned to us at one time about, are we gonna do anything because of the ice that hangs down? And that's what Torrey is doing, that he's brought in somebody from Vermont Efficiency, and they're gonna do a, tell them what, what work has to be done while we have it open up to do the doors and stuff?
Right, especially on the front.
Yeah.
And we, we don't know yet, we don't have a cost estimate on, on the other areas, but.
Yeah, so that's that there.
All the way through though, it is a substantial savings to the town in the long run.
We're still at the point where the town had a plan to be buying a piece of land somewhere. Good luck with that today at a reasonable price. Um, and then building, a building of that size, and it would be, like this building was six million dollars or whatever, five, six million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd probably be six or seven million dollars with the new town hall, and we're nowhere near that with this town hall. Plus, we still get the seventy-two thousand dollars a year in, um, office, um, from the post office. Number six, and, um, Patrick, before we jump, let's just let Tom talk after I read it. Article Six, shall the town of Killington elect two additional select board members for terms of two years each pursuant to seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty parentheses B, whose terms shall take effect on June one, twenty twenty-five, with a special meeting to be warned to fill these additional positions in the event this article passes? So Tom, I, because Patrick had sent me something, and I spoke with you, and
Yep.
you know, a, 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 a meeting, a, a, wear Australian ballot, and can you just run through why that?
Sound is going.
Your internet, it says your internet connection is, something came up. Can you hear us now? Did the internet just go?
I'm on, okay, well, let me double check.
There we go, I think they're back.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yep, it just froze for a second.
All right, it said internet went for a second. So I'm gonna do it once again. Shall the town of Killington elect two additional select board members for terms of two years each pursuant to seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty parentheses B, whose terms shall take effect June one, twenty twenty-five, with a special meeting to be warned to fill these additional positions in the event this article passes? Now, I know there's been questioning about special meeting, Australian ballot, but Tom has spoken to legal counsel, and this is the only way to do it, but we have to have it in an Australian ballot.
Correct. So the way this is set up is, um, if this article passes, a town meeting, um, and then there will be an election for two more seats, and, uh, those people that get elected to those will be, uh, effective June one, twenty twenty-five. The way the petition came in, um, just wasn't operationally functional. It didn't describe how or when new people would take office if it passes. So our legal counsel said to change it and gave us these words, this exact language. Um, and the reason it doesn't say special annual meeting, because you're gonna, the law only allows for one annual meeting. So it's called a special meeting, um, in the last line. And I think that's what Patrick was questioning, why is it called that? And it's really an election.
And, and why did they go for, uh, two-year terms instead of three?
Because you're floating in this five board if it passes. So if it was three, then, I don't know, then, then, then they're on for three. It's the way the statute's written, it says two years.
So then everyone goes on a two-year cycle after that?
No, then you'll be on three.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, then they go on three.
Then they go on three.
Oh, okay, after, okay, got you, got you. You run for two, and then you go to.
And then later on you run for three. And then I would think there's two spots every year then, as you're going through.
You always have a couple of spots.
You always have a couple of spots, okay? But we did have to reword it, well, we really didn't have to reword it, but we felt that it's a discussion that the town should have, so we made the changes according to legal, and it's up for a vote, and it's up for discussion for the next six weeks, I guess.
All right.
All right. Does that answer what you were looking for, Patrick?
Oh, I was gonna talk about the cemetery.
Oh, okay, I was talking, so that's fine. So can I get a motion?
Well, change of subjects.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You did send me something, I was saying for Hyde Park or something to make sure.
Yeah, Hyde Park is getting in trouble of having both, um, town meetings and Australian ballots, and you can really only have one or the other.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do it the right way, okay? So can I get a, um, motion to approve the warning, uh, public information hearing of March third, twenty twenty-five, and the annual town meeting by Australian ballots for March fourth of twenty twenty-five?
Motion, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now we're into open public comment again, but nobody else has anything in here? Any other thing on the Zoom?
Yep.
Other business?
Other business, we, from the cemetery, we touched on, uh, two weeks ago about if the cemetery was over ten thousand or not. Uh, I want to say thank you to Mary Ellen, so I want to tell the board that Mary Ellen went in, did an investigation. I ran a parallel with her, and we got to, from the information we have, we both got to the same spot that everything is good. It was caught up, there was a issue between fiscal years of the cemetery and the town, and also that we don't always receive the check at the same time. So everything should be fine, all good. But I want to make sure the board knew that Mary Ellen did a great job helping me out.
That's great.
Good.
I think Monica helped on that also, rolling through it, so let's give it all the way around.
Yes, she did.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else for other business, Tom?
I don't have anything.
Executive session, um, I'd like to go into executive session at seven forty-one. Um, it's still for contracts for, um, town manager at this point. Can I get a motion?
Oh, yeah, motion, yep.
Oh, yeah, motion, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so I don't believe we're coming out with anything after this, right now, we're having a discussion, so, that being said, we're gonna stop recording this.